Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Sam, roll call.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Trustee Orsailu?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee McElroy?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Do we have adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Here. Or yes, sorry. New answer, new answer. Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane? Yes. Do we have any community input on closed session items?
All right, seeing none. We will now move into closed session. The items are conference with legal counsel, workers' compensation claim number 576158, number 601104, and number 522219. And then B, conference with legal counsel, workers' compensation claim number 1207-03-0155. C, conference with labor negotiator. And D, public employee discipline dismissal release. And we will return to open session at 6:00 PM.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Opening ceremonies and moments of reflection and pledge allegiance led by Leah Ursailu.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the adoption of the minutes. As amended, item 17C was missing from the first motion. So do I have a motion to adopt the minutes from 6:24:24?
So moved.
Second. So it was moved by trustee Ursailu and seconded by Murphy. Okay. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Right, and this is an exciting day. We have introduction to new staff. Superintendent Smith?
Yeah, very, very exciting for us, and I would be remiss to not, once again, state that, a compliment to the Board of Education for leading in a manner that this district is more than desirable. People want to be here, people are willing to take lateral moves to be a part of this great work that we're doing. And so thank you for your leadership. Really excited tonight, in the first instance, to introduce Jeff, or Jeffrey Dixon, as the Assistant Superintendent, Chief Business Official. Jeffrey has had 15 years of education leadership experience, including recently serving as Acting Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Business Services at the Gooden Beach Unified. From facilities to financial planning, he's known for sound judgment, integrity, and building trusting relationships. A lot of experience, again, in other districts doing this work, especially the facilities part was something that we were really excited about in this district. We know that safety is task one, responsibility one for us, and so making sure that our facilities are safe, that's what our students and employees deserve, but also in good repair, because people do better when they're working in appropriate environments. So really excited that Jeff has this experience. And then, coming from a community-funded district, he speaks our language, which we really appreciate. And one of his former bosses said, if I were to go and start my own district, he's the first person I would call to go with me. I thought that was a great compliment to him. So, welcome Jeff, if you want to come up and say a few words, introduce your family.
Well, thank you, Dr. Smith, for that incredibly kind introduction. And, you know, I just like to get the work done, I like to get the attention on me. But I am very excited to take on the work and be part of the Newport Mesa family. This is a great place to work, as Dr. Smith mentioned, and I am incredibly grateful. And so that'll be reflective in the work I put forward for you. On that note, in addition to just being excited about today as my first board meeting, this is also my 19th wedding anniversary.
Oh!
Happy anniversary, honey. So if you wouldn't mind standing up, this is my wife, Kelly. And then, my oldest daughter Stella Dixon, and her younger brother Mitchell Dixon. We have a lot of great things happening, I already know, just two weeks in, and again, I'm excited and really passionate about the facilities, but also the transparency and the financial acumen that this job takes. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
It's also my great pleasure to introduce Tracy Nibb as our new Assistant Superintendent, Chief Human Resource Officer. Tracy brings more than 23 years of public education leadership experience, most recently serving as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources at Orange Unified. Known for building strong teams and aligning strategies with student needs, Tracy is a trusted leader in recruitment, negotiations, compliance, and professional growth. We really look forward to her leadership. Besides all of that, she's been a teacher, a coordinator, an assistant principal, a principal. She teaches an educational law and policy class in a credentialing program. And this was a cool thing that someone said about her, someone that works for one of our labor groups at the area level, when asked about her, he said, "She's a straight shooter and she's honest." I think that's a heck of a compliment for anyone in our work, so, welcome, Tracy.
I want to thank you all for the kind welcome. It's truly an honor to serve in this role, because I get to support the tremendous employees of our district. The first two weeks that I've been here have been incredibly positive and inspiring, and I'm so very excited to be part of this community and contribute to the amazing work that I know we have to do together. So I have my family here with me this evening as well, no anniversary to celebrate, so Jeff showed us all up with that, but that's okay. I do have my husband, high school sweetheart, Mike. I have my oldest daughter Zoe. Her husband and my son-in-law, Zalyn. And my perfect grandson, Xander. Notice disease, right? It's a theme, it's a theme. And then my youngest daughter, Jocelyn. I really do look forward to working with all of you, thank you.
Thank you. It's great, welcome to Newport Mesa, we're super excited to have you, so, can't wait to get down to work. Now, we're gonna go to Harbor Council PTA report. Martha Flore?
So exciting to be back here. Good evening, President Wigan, Vice President Orsailu, Clerk Murphy, new trustee McElroy, Board, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and community members. My name is Martha Flore, and I am the current president of the Harbor Council PTA. Our council is gearing up for another fabulous year of service to our students, families, and schools. Each of our 28 units have their executive boards in place and are planning for this year. Thank you again, Board and staff, for your commitment to fund outdoor science camp, field trips, dedicated visual and performing arts programs throughout our district and schools through Prop 28 and more. This relieves the pressure of fundraising at our local PTAs, and we can do much more exciting things with the funds that we do raise. All are looking forward to the expansion of the extracurricular activities at our elementary schools, and we look forward to seeing what's coming of that. Our 5,500 members are ready and willing to assist you, just say the word and we'll be there. Speaking of assisting, I would like to give a shout-out to Lisa Bowler and her involvement in several of our Westside schools. Mary Capellini reached out, as well as Carol Crane, for assistance to get a phone bank up and running for our SOI families, to keep them informed and deliver free and reduced meals. Through Lisa's network of PTA volunteers from Pomona, Wilson, Whittier, and more, they were able to personalize, make personalized calls, and assist them in securing the meals and needed assistance from the SOI family. I'm encouraging each and every one of the Board members, Cabinet, and community members to join at least one PTA in your respective areas. I'll be passing on to Samantha and Rosie a listing of our unit's QR codes, it'll just make it really easy for you. Jeff, there is a gold sequined jacket in the closet waiting for you. It's nice that you have the same name, and you want to stay in the background? That ain't happening in this country, I'm going to tell you. Tracy, welcome. Know a lot of your Board members from yours district, I was a former Board member. There are 34 days until August 18th, the opening of school, and it isn't coming soon enough for us grandparents. Trust me on this. Parents, hmm, and kids, a definite no. Teachers and staff, I know that you're anxious and you haven't had a day off, so thank you again, and we're looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a report from CSEA President Amy Chang.
Hi. Come on. Good evening, Board President Wigan, Trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and guests. I'd like to begin by congratulating trustee McElroy and welcoming her to the Board. We are excited to have her with us. I'd also like to extend a warm welcome to Assistant Superintendent Tracy Nibb and Assistant Superintendent Jeff Dixon. We had the opportunity to spend some time together earlier this last week, and I'm truly enjoying getting to know them both. Their experience and leadership will be an asset to our district. A big thank you also to our summer staff. I continue to hear good things about the programs that have been taking place from our members. So, they've been working hard, and their dedication has not gone unnoticed to the success of the students and the programs we offer. I'd also like to acknowledge all the staff who work year-round. Thank you for their continued commitment to students and community. Thanks to the Board's continued leadership and direction, we ended last school year by launching the Think Tank, an initiative focused on supporting professional development for our classified staff. With Tracy and Jeff now onboard, we are eager to continue this important work and expand opportunities for growth and recognition across all levels. We look forward to the CSEA State Conference next week in Reno, so we'll be packed in there. But luckily, I think we have 10 of us going this year, so it's gonna be great for our members and really the support at the state level for resolutions that we can vote on for statewide CSEA. And then, also, we look forward to, as Martha said, 34 days, I believe? 34 days to the school year, and I will be joining back there again this year. So, yes, you're welcome. And as always, we look forward to continuing to do the good work for students, staff, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's the time for community input on non-agendized items. Do we have any comments? None? All right, moving on. Seeing no community input on non-agendized items, we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
None.
Great. Now, let's move on to community input on agendized items. Clerk Murphy?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the Board if the speaker prefers.
Thank you. We have one speaker, and name is Michael Mulroy, I think that's an R. Mulroy?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for working with Robbins Nest over the last few years and considering a new no-cost to the district MOU as part of your agenda this evening. As a brief introduction, my name is Michael Mulroy, and I'm a proud parent of a CDM High School graduate and a current student at CDM. I am also a member of the Board of Directors of Robbins Nest, a 501(c)(3) charity whose mission is to provide at-risk and homeless students who have little to no parental support with the resources to complete high school and pursue a path to self-sufficiency. We work closely with the district, which refers students to Robbins Nest for entry into our program. These students lack adequate support from their parents to meet their emotional and other basic needs. Robbins Nest supports these students by providing various services, including lodging, food, clothing, tutoring, mental wellness support, and life skills training to help drive school attendance, as well as engagement and academic progress at school. Every child we work with has his or her own story, which is typically full of complicated details tied to their being born into a family that has largely failed them. While we provide many services in many different ways tailored to each of these kids, on some level, our goal is rather simple. I could talk about reducing levels of chronic absenteeism or suspension rates for homeless students, but I like to think about it from a teacher's perspective. Here's a fictitious quote from a fictitious teacher. It's completely made up, but I think it's helpful. "If my most at-risk students could come to class better rested, better fed, having made some progress in processing whatever trauma they have experienced in the past, and especially if they are building some degree of belief in their own futures, that would really help my classroom, my ability to get through the day's curriculum, and all of my students' ability to learn." While I can only guess that is what teachers want, I know that is what Robbins Nest does. Again, thank you to the district, its Board, and all its staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mike Bargus, and you're speaking on 16A9. If you can speak now, or if you want to speak at that time, but...
Let's speak now.
Okay, let's speak now, perfect. You got quite the crowd, quite the support.
Call it the peanut gallery. Good evening, Board members, Mr. Superintendent, all the stakeholders. My name is Mike Bargus, I'm the head football coach at Estancia High School. My 19th year at this school, I'm the dinosaur of private coaching staffs in Newport Mesa. Previous to that, I was at Newport Harbor High School, I was assistant coach for 15 years of a Newport Harbor alumni, my wife is as well. I currently have one student, my son's gonna be a junior, and my daughter graduated last year, and my other son graduated in 2012, so, former student, coach, teacher, I've kind of done it all. And so I'm speaking on behalf of a small portion of our young men today. We have an agenda item of getting some support, some much-needed breadth of fresh air for equipment and building for our campus. We have, on our football program, as you very well know, we're one of the smallest high schools in Orange County, or the smallest high school in Orange County, but we have approximately 10% of the males and a female on the football team of our student body. And I want to thank you for strongly considering this. As I've learned, as I'm getting closer to my retirement in a few years, we are, I've learned, number one, I gotta do a better job of practicing grace, and number two is that we're stewards of everything that's here. And I've learned that even in my classroom, it's like, don't be territorial, wherever they put you is where they put you. But what you have the opportunity to do tonight, as well as these young men and the parents that are here, is leave a legacy for something that's gonna outlive. I told Ms. Anderson, I said, "This is gonna outlive us." And I hope that when you make your decision, you consider that, as well as, you know, our Westside kids are just as great and awesome as our kids from the other schools and school districts, and it'd be awesome for them to get something to look forward to. I know it's a little late for our seniors, but like I told them, as long as they're gonna have carte blanche to go on there and use the facility that they helped build, but I hope that you will strongly consider it, and like I said, be good stewards of this money that we're so blessed to have in our school district, and share a little bit of that with the kids from the Westside. But we just came off the football field, sorry for stinking up the place, but we just came off the field. We go all the time, and again, like I said, I want to thank you for what you do for us already, but we'd be also eternally grateful too, if, you know, we could make this thing happen. So, again, thank you so much on behalf of the football program, and come on down and watch us play. You know, our guys aren't very big, but they play their butts off. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to 16 is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Ursailu. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
All right, 7-0, the motion carries. Moving on to 17, discussion action calendar, 17A, approve fourth amendment to employment agreement for Superintendent Smith. Superintendent Smith?
As a function of my contract, I have an opportunity with a positive evaluation to ask for contract enhancements. The only one I ask for is that you keep letting me serve, so it's a one-year extension to my existing contract.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Pearson, seconded by trustee Murphy?
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan? Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations. We're happy to have you. All right, 17B, approve secondary textbook adoption. Dr. Torres?
Yes, this evening in front of you tonight, you have the approval of two textbooks. We have Human Anatomy and Physiology, and we have Precálculus. These are new editions of existing textbooks, they have been on display for 30 days, and we have had no viewers and no comments.
Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of secondary textbook?
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Orsailu. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Right, motion carries 7-0. 17C, approve addition of high school and middle school course of study. Dr. Torres?
Yes, tonight in front of you, the Board has the exciting opportunity to approve a new course within our CTE pathway, and so we have in front of you tonight baking and pastries for our culinary program.
That's wonderful. Let's get more of those. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Pearson, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, we have a comment?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes, I think this is fantastic, because I know that Newport Harbor has a top culinary school on campus, and this just adds another level and another opportunity for kids who are, because there's a difference between a baker and a chef, that is a kitchen chef, and so, or whatever that's called. So I think I love the fact that we're adding this next level, because we are meeting the needs of kids who have different focus within the same career. So, thank you for doing that, and I can't wait for them to open a café and invite us to come over for some croissants.
All right, vote.
Roll call vote. Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
We.
Okay, moving on to 18. 18 is resolution adoption calendar, 18A, adopt resolution 25-07-25, authorizing the removal of district representative signatory and approval of naming district representative for the state eligibility determination school facility program form SAB 50-03. Assistant Superintendent Dixon?
Thank you. So, as we all know, Mr. Trader has retired, and to be an authorized signer for the state allocation board, where we process our applications for state matching funds for our facilities projects, this just swaps his name and puts my name there, so it can keep that program going and submit all of our forms to the Office of Public School Construction.
Great. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Anderson, seconded by trustee Murphy. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yep.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. 18B, adopt resolution 26-07-25, Newport Mesa Unified School District Authorization of Signatures for the Orange County Department of Education. Assistant Superintendent Dixon?
Yes, thank you. Similar to that first resolution, this swaps Jeffrey Trader with Jeffrey Dixon for the Orange County Department of Education as an authorized signer.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Orsailu?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee McElroy?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Wow, very impressed with everyone. That was 25 minutes. Let's see if we can get Mr. Dixon to his anniversary in time. All right. Number 19, informal reports. Superintendent Smith?
As we've mentioned before, we don't take summers off, and this summer, we've been doing a lot of great activities. One of the things we've done with some teachers and district leaders under Segrow Shield's leadership is we've been a part of the redesign institute for superintendents and educators, a new state-sponsored pilot to look at how we rethink schools, especially in light of artificial intelligence. What can that do? How can that help us? And we appreciate that work. Part of their process, though, is to work on a strategic plan. We had to kind of let them know that that's what our district is doing, in fact. They just hired a consultant recently to take us through a year-long process of reimagining Newport Mesa Unified for 2030 and beyond, a portrait of a graduate, what we want our students to know and be able to do when they leave our schools, what do we value, what is our vision for the future, and how do we use our resources, all of them, people, facilities, dollars, how do we use them to achieve that portrait for our students, all 18,000 of them? It's gonna be exciting. Our community is going to be involved, a lot of community outreach, employees, staff, students alike, so it's gonna be a great process. And so, we started with RISE, and we had to tell them, eh, we're gonna do our own strategic planning, but when we're done, we'll bring it back and share it with you. Another thing that's gone on this summer is our summer collective. We've had quite a few projects this summer, it was quite an endeavor, that we had the courage to say, "We have to make our campuses as safe as we can this summer, we have to repair them where needed." The Board was kind enough to authorize those resources, and we had to put together a plan to do it, a plan we hadn't tried before, we called the collective, bringing in multiple agencies to oversee these projects. Happy to report that, you know, while there'll be some small delays here and there, there won't be delays to classroom instruction as it currently sits today.
Okay.
And that's a big one. Because in one instance, to keep the campus safe, we had to redesign the entire interior of the campus. All the walls are up, almost all the skins are on the walls, the roughage has been pulled. I mean, we're looking good. In other schools, again, we don't anticipate any disruptions to learning, although we might have to tweak some things here and there to start the year, but we're excited about the work that our team has done, the work that our consultants have done. Our kids and our employees are gonna benefit greatly from this summer collective, and so thank you, Board, for authorizing that activity. And that's it.
Great. Before we get started, I'm gonna start Carol down there, and we'll move all this way, but I just wanted to welcome our new trustee, Andrea McElroy. We're so happy to have you, and now we're full as a 7-0 board, and we can't wait to do all the great work for our students that I know that they deserve. So, with that, I'm gonna have Carol start, and we'll move on down.
All right. All right, and Ditter as well, welcome, and now we are whole, and I'm very excited, because a six-person governing team is vulnerable and seven is solid, so, welcome. And so, had the pleasure today of visiting, along with Trustee Pearson, the Harbor View Summer Learning Academy. Thank you, Christie Flores, and also the principal there, or the administrative intern who led us through the tour of the school. It was amazing to see the kids just vibrantly learning and just happy and not on a screen, not on a phone, but being interactive and just, you know, developing their social skills, and their also educational skills and creative skills. So, thank you so much, that was wonderful. I also looking forward to attending the East Bluff Communities, Summer School Community Theater Play Oklahoma. There's about 80 of our kids that are involved in that summer program, so very excited to go and see creativity once again, you know, being used over summer. And I attended a governor's workshop today on Zoom, and I'm always learning more about how we can better run the district, and so, that's it for now.
Don't need to push anything? No.
No. Just get close to the thing.
Hello, everyone. I'm very happy to be here. I'm very honored to have been elected, and I'm committed to serving our students and our community with integrity. I don't take this privilege lightly. I commit to this board to work with you, each of you, to be successful and demonstrate effective and wise decision-making. I had the opportunity to meet with Principal Bolton yesterday to talk and tour Newport Harbor. I was thoroughly impressed with what I saw. We toured the entire school, the new culinary classroom built out. It's going to be outstanding. The upgrades to the theater were amazing. The tar TV program in studio were exciting to see. The pool should be finished within a month. The classrooms looked great. Principal Bolton explained to me the sentecix? Sentecix?
Sentecix.
Sentecix security system to me. Wow, is all I can say. It's incredible. It's the security for the school, it's amazing, very impressive. There are so many other things that I saw, but I won't list them all tonight. I also met with Superintendent Smith right away, and that was very helpful for someone that is new to the job. Thank you for that. I also had the chance to meet with three assistant superintendents yesterday to answer questions I had, and thank you for your time. It was very valuable, and I took in all the info and received, and I was able to make decisions, so thank you for that. And thank you all that has assisted me this week. There's been a lot of people helping me out. I'm just learning the ropes. So overall, I had a wonderful first week, and I really look forward to a very successful year for our children and for our community and for all of us in general. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to several of our staff members, who, summer is their busiest season. I wanted to say thank you to Christie Flores for all of the work that you've done with summer school, particularly in providing resources for families, providing bus transportation and rearranging that so it's safest for families. Thank you so much for going above and beyond. Miss Shields as well, for making sure that that happens in our community and for getting food and other resources. And I just wanted to also say thank you to our new Jeff for jumping right in feet first and being willing to go out and visit school sites immediately, I think your first week, and just really having a heart for hearing from our teachers and from our staff who will be impacted by the facilities. I think it was really great to have that happen for our Estancia football coach before an item comes to the agenda, so thank you so much for asking great questions and being willing to be present. Thank you.
Yes, welcome, Jeff, Tracy, and Andrea. Welcome to the team. You've joined a wonderful team. I was able to, Wes mentioned, Wes and Jeff both met yesterday, and we were able to walk the construction site at Anderson. It's amazing. I mean, we're very fortunate to have the team that's working there. Thank you for putting walls up for our students. Not only will they be safe, but they're also going to be able to focus while they learn, which is huge. So, thank you. Thank you to our facilities team. Thank you, Jeff, for jumping right into that. I was able to visit the summer school program, which is always fun. We always get so many wonderful comments from the teachers about the summer school program, and Christie, I just looked at her and said, "There's just so much going on. I don't know how you do this." So, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for our kids. And go to Oklahoma. I'm going to see you.
Yes, so, welcome, Tracy and Jeff. I do hope that you put that gold jacket on, because it is amazing, and we all appreciate it very much, so just know you're probably going to have to. And also, thank you so much for summer school. We've been hearing really great things. All of my neighbors are in love with summer school for so many reasons, and it's just great to see that we've been able to maintain the attendance levels in our summer school, so I really can't thank everyone enough for making sure that our kids are safe and that they're feeling like they can attend summer school and get all of the benefits that summer school has to offer, and, you know, not just, you know, not just, you know, reading and writing, but all of the fun stuff. So, the only other thing I have to mention is that Costa Mesa Middle and High School is having their principal, new principal, sort of thought exchange slash community member involvement engagement meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock in the Costa Mesa Library. So, for anyone out there listening, and for all of you who might be interested in the new principal or having some input in the new principal over at Costa Mesa, we welcome you to come. It's going to be, I think, an engaged conversation, engaging conversation, and we're just really looking forward to seeing what happens, what we can do next with Mesa. So, thank you, everyone.
Yes, triple Ditter to Oklahoma. Farm girl number seven does not disappoint. She loves a big crowd, so please go from 7 to 9 tomorrow, Thursday or Friday.
Well, that's great. I want to mention two things, and then you know how I like to get us out there early, but, one, I was at with Trustee Anderson, actually, and Christie Flores, the Ben Carlson Foundation. I want, they had a foundation dinner this past weekend, and they have been such a great amazing partners for our swim safety, and, you know, Trustee Anderson really spearheaded the idea of that, and, you know, Ben Carlson, getting that Ben Carlson Foundation to provide, you know, all of the different swim bathing suits, towels, transportation, all that kind of good stuff, and they're going to expand that even more next year to eight schools. And so, they're just in a phenomenal organization that's doing great work, and so, thank you, Ashley and Christie, for all the hard work that you guys are doing on that program. It's phenomenal, it's great to be a part of. Also, I was at the Coastline ROP meeting earlier today with Lisa Snowden, and we were working on our strategic goals for Coastline ROP and partnering, you know, with all of our CTE courses here, but I just wanted to, a big, an interesting thing on Coastline ROP is that they not only serve four of our districts, but they also service our access students, as well as, now they won the OC Probations Contract, where they are going to be providing for incarcerated youth, providing medical billing and culinary classes. So, when they come out, they will have a clear pathway, which I think is amazing. And then, just wanted to echo the amazing things on summer school. A couple of my constituents said that their kids didn't learn, weren't really clued into school during the year, but summertime, there it's where it's at, so I don't know what we're doing there, but the engagement in summer program seems to be very, it seems to be very high. So, everyone, thank you so much for doing all the hard work for our students, and by the time we meet next year, or next month, we will be back in school. So, that's exciting and nervous, nerve-wracking too, so, but it'll be great. And welcome to everyone that's new, and thank you for a lovely meeting, and I'm going to